Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the April meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM moderator. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our March 12 meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to those minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as presented stand adopted upon unanimous I have suggested an organization of our agenda tonight and informed our district and committee chairs, and that suggestion is to designate pursuant to our rules for our consent calendar items four, seven, nine, and eighteen through twenty-five, which I will do shortly, to combine for voting purposes seven items. Those are items two, five, six, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen, which would leave to be considered separate items one, three, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, and sixteen. So, at this time, I will designate the following eleven items to be placed on our consent calendar, which means if they remain on our consent calendar, we will hear no committee reports and have no discussion on these items. The first item is item number four, the appointment of Patrick Sline to be a regular member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring March 31, 2015. The next item for the consent calendar is item seven. That is the appointment of Noble Welch to be a regular member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2015. The next item is item number nine, the appointment of Paul DeBarry to be a regular member of the Board of Ethics with a term expiring March 31, 2015. And items eighteen through twenty-five are the appointments of the following eight individuals to be members of the Claims Committee for the term expiring, the RTM term expiring December 31, 2013. And those eight RTM members to be appointed to the Claims Committee are Jane Arnone, Robert Beerman, Kip Bergweger, Glenn Kaner, Ed Dedakis, Lloyd Hull, Ed Manganello, and John Schulman. So I have now designated eleven items for our consent calendar. Are there any objections to those eleven items being placed on our consent calendar? Hearing none and absent objection, will our district chairs please mark their voting cards, consent calendar items four, seven, nine, and eighteen through twenty-five, and proceed to poll your delegation? At this time, I will recommend that we suspend the rules pursuant to the reports that we received from our districts in order to combine the following seven items for voting purposes. Those are items two, five, six, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen. Is there such a motion to suspend the rules?
No.
It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine items two, five, six, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen for voting purposes. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of suspending the rules and combining items two, five, six, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion has carried, and that will leave to be considered separately after we take up the combined calendar items, items one, three, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, and sixteen. So the first of our combined calendar items now comes before us. That is item number two. May we have the resolution on that item? Oh, this, I'm sorry, this was postponed from our March 12 meeting, so it is now currently before us. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item? Mr. Von Keiseling with the chair of our Appointments Committee?
I think we were the ones that were behind. P&amp;Z had, I'm excuse you, Land Use had already interviewed, and I guess we'll hear the report. We met with Mr. Shippey on 3/27, and we voted 12-0-0 for his renomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. The Land Use Committee interviewed Mr. Shippey last Monday night at Town Hall. All districts were represented. Mr. Shippey is being reappointed as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. He has, in addition to serving as an alternate member, he has served as a full member. He was relocated by his employer, Europe, on his return rather than, he rejoined the board as an alternate. He prefers to be an alternate, but he does have long experience on this, on this board. We posed questions to Mr. Shippey about his views on what constitutes hardships and special He gave an example of a hardship as adding a roof over the front door of a house that predates current zoning and is too close to the, to the road. He thinks that, he said in many cases, that's a reasonable hardship, whereas requesting more FAR, that is floor area, floor area simply because a family is growing, is not a hardship. He noted that all applications for non-residential uses in residential zones such as churches, schools, country clubs are considered special exceptions regardless of what is being granted, large or innocuous. Mr. Shippey said he only attends hearings when his presence is needed, that is when they need a substitute for a regular member. Our vote on Mr. Shippey was 11-1. District Seven voted no. He, the delegate from District Seven said he would like to see a different mix and fresh thinking of appointees with more members with legal background, knowledge in land use law and regulations, environmental sensitivity to issues in town, or working for companies in a public venue or for the public trust who would be more supportive of the plan of conservation and development as contrasted with special interests involved in real estate development or for self-interest. Mr. Shippey is a banker. I don't believe, I don't believe that that remark was meant to suggest that he has a conflict. So again, our vote on Mr. Shippey was 11-1-0.
Thank you. Discussion on item two. Mr. Quigley, did you want to be heard at this point?
Okay.
Discussion on item two. Item five now comes before us. May we have the, that also was postponed from our March meeting. This is the appointment of Richard Lowe to be a regular member of the Board of Parks and Recreation with a term expiring March 31, 2015. Karen Sada Khan, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and fellow members. We met with Mr. Lowe this evening. He couldn't make it to our committee meeting last week. We had everyone present except District Two. The vote was 11-0-0. Rick has lived in Greenwich since he was three. He attended Greenwich Public Schools, worked and lived in Singapore for a number of years, and decided he wanted to not travel and spend his time in Greenwich. So since 1997, he's been working in real estate in Greenwich. He's had a lot of involvement in the town with his own children in sports, their hockey, baseball, crewing. He believes that the whole Parks and Recreation topic is critical to the town. It's one of the most important components of living in Greenwich, whether it's beaches, whether it's parks, whether it's recreation, whether it's passive. He believes in private and public partnerships that can help get things off the ground. He has served actively on the Friends of Hamel rink for years, and that's where public par, private partnerships he thinks could be useful. He's very interested in the budgetary issues in Greenwich and how they will affect the recreational facilities, for instance, the skating rink and perhaps the Byron Pool proposal. His favorite park is Todd's Point. His one, the park that he's interested in seeing what happens is the Cosco Power Plant, how we proceed to get that accomplished, complete, not accomplish, complete. He was asked specifically his views about recreation versus passive. With children, you're involved in recreation. As you get older, you like to walk in the parks. I thought that was a great description of how Greenwich uses its facilities. Several members gave glowing endorsements of his nomination. So again, our vote was 11-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with the report of our Appointments Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We met with Mr. Lowe on March 20th. Our vote was 12-0-0 for all the reasons mentioned before.
Thank you. Discussion on item five. Item six now comes before us. Again, this was postponed from our March meeting. This is the appointment of Donald Lansman to be a regular member of the Board of Parks and Recreation with a term expiring March 31, 2015. Karen Sada Khan with the report of our Parks and Recreation Committee?
Good evening again. Our interview with Mr. Lansman was a slam dunk. It was the shortest that I've ever seen happen. Donald has such an extensive background in Greenwich, I think most of the committee was aware of it. He's lived in Greenwich for 40 years. He served on the RTM with us for 20 years. Asked what his interest is in getting involved again, he served on the POCD Downtown Committee, which caused interest in the small park down on the avenue, the Greenwich Common. He has ideas that came out of their committee that he would like to see looked at and worked on, developing that little park area, perhaps having a walkway at Roger Sherman Park and having a walkway from the waterfront to Greenwich Avenue. I think we spent two and a half minutes with him. The vote was 11-0-0, and District Five was absent. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Von Keiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We met with our old friend Donald Lansman on the 20th of March. We had a much longer interview, maybe five minutes, and everybody knew him well. He seemed to be focusing, as mentioned, on the parks, but it seemed in my opinion that he was more interested in doable projects, small doable projects at this point, such as the Havemar Building Park there, the Greenwich Common. Thank you.
Discussion on item six. Item 13 now comes before us. Peter Tessie, our first selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed an alternate member of the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency for a term expiring 3/31/16. Norma Kerlin.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 13 has been moved and seconded. Peter Berg with the Land Use Committee report.
Good evening again. The Land Use Committee interviewed Norma Kerlin last Monday night at Town Hall. All districts were represented. Norma Kerlin is being appointed to the Inland Wetlands Water Courses Agency as an, as an alternate. She's, she will be new to that agency. She is an attorney. She's retired from the city of New York. She has a great interest in environmental issues and particularly wetlands preservation. She is taking a course in wetlands and will take some more. Our vote on Ms. Kerlin was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with our Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We met with Ms. Kerlin on the 27th of this month. It's a new alternate for inland wetlands. We voted 12-0-0. I think it's fair to say that the committee was impressed by her, as we haven't been for a long time, that she was an extremely able, energetic lady with a background not only in law, working for the city of New York, defending their interests, which means she should be well able to handle the morass of inland wetlands regulations, and also did not seem to be too intimidated by the threat of lawsuits. But more importantly was her passion for the, her parks and grasslands and wetlands that she exhibited in her training and in her education. 12-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on item 13. Item 14 now comes before us. David Teis, our selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Commission on Aging for a term expiring 3/31/15. Patricia Rand Burns.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item 14 has been moved and seconded. Alexis Valgueras, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee?
Good evening. The Health and Human Services Committee met with Ms. Burns last week to discuss her nomination to the Commission on Aging. Ms. Burns has been a very, has been very active in the Greenwich community for many years, and much of her experience has been devoted to fundraising. She presently serves on the boards of the United Way and the Red Cross. This past fall, she chaired the 2011 Breast Cancer Alliance Luncheon, where she helped raise almost $1 million. Ms. Burns has also served on the Nathaniel Witherall Board, where she used her fundraising expertise, expertise to establish the Friends of Nathaniel Witherall.
Oh, sorry. Thanks.
The Friends is the 501(c)(3) not-for-profit arm, which does philanthropy and conducts fundraising and community activities throughout the year. Ms. Burns would now like to focus her attention on the Commission on Aging and the Senior Center and assist these programs with their fundraising needs. During our interview, Ms. Burns stated that she enjoys working with seniors and that in preparation for joining the board, she has attended several Commission on Aging board meetings. She's eaten at the Senior Center, and she's even taken a class there. She feels as if she has an understanding of the programs offered and the community that participates in those programs. One of the biggest issues the Senior Center faces is that it is located in a tired building that often can't meet the growing needs of the program. Ms. Burns would like to focus on exploring new space options. She stressed that this is a long-term project and that she would like to gather input from all of the stakeholders before formulating a plan. She hopes that by harnessing her considerable fundraising skills and replicating the success she had in creating the Friends of Nathaniel Witherall, that she can, that she can raise the financial resources necessary to help the Senior Center and Commission on Aging achieve their long-term goal of having a building that can meet their ongoing needs. Our committee voted 11-0-0 with District 11 absent in favor of Ms. Burns's nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with our Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We met with Ms. Burns on the 20th of March. Her vote was 12-0-0. Again, she comes to us having proved herself many, many times throughout the town in various areas, most remarkably setting up the 501(c) for Nathaniel Witherall, which was key to their whole strategy. I believe the thought is that the Commission on the Aging, now that it's been given charge of the Senior Center and taking care of that and looking for alternatives and upgrading for their services there, is looking to Ms. Burns as being one of their spark plugs for fundraising their operations from a public-private partnership. So she will be an important addition. Again, 12-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on item 14. Item 15 now comes before us. David Teis, once again, with that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring 3/31/14. Kenneth C. Rogazinski.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 15 has been moved and seconded. Peter Berg with our Land Use report.
Thank you, and good evening again. So as Mr. Teis correctly stated, Mr. Rogazinski is a new nomination, not a reappointment. I believe the call may be incorrect on that. Mr. Rogazinski has been serving on the Selectmen's POCD Housing Committee. He has a background in public housing finance. He was a very important contributor to that committee. He has indicated an interest in continuing in town government and particularly on this, on this committee. Our vote on Mr. Rogazinski was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We met with Mr. Rogazinski on the 27th of March. The vote was 12-0-0. It was a pleasure to listen to Mr. Rogazinski. He had a lot of energy and with his professional background and his interested, interest in these areas, we highly recommend him.
Thank you. Discussion on item 15. And the last of our combined items, item 17 now comes before us. Drew Marzullo, our selectman.
Mr. Moderator, members of the town meeting, happy Passover, happy Easter. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed as a regular member of the Board of Ethics for a term expiring 3/31/15. John B. Morgenot, Jr.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 17 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with Mr. Harkins, Chair of our Town Services Committee?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and fellow members of the RTM. We met on April 3rd to interview with Mr. Morgenot. He presented his CV to us and indicated that Mr. Tessie had invited him to serve. Mr. Morgenot has not attended any Board of Ethics meetings, however, but he believes his prior service to the town and his not being an attorney will give him a unique and needed perspective on the subject of ethics. The vote in favor of Mr. Morgenot's appointment was 12-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We met with the Honorable John Morgenot on the 27th. We had the rare privilege of having his son there also, who, just as a side comment, my, my committee is going to nominate for the last open seat on Claims Committee, you'll have in the next call, Rick Morgenot. So it was hard to distinguish the two. One's a little taller, one has more hair, but was happy to see them, and for me, it was a particular pleasure before, because I think Mr. Morgenot started, according to his CV, in the 50s, serving the town in RTM for many years there. Who would know the town better? One of the things that has concerned, been of concern about ethics is that there are many phases of ethics and applications. There's business ethics, there's legal ethics, and then there's government ethics. And ethics is, should be fitted to the circumstance to which it applies, particularly in the town of Greenwich, where we have such a volunteer government, and we have people with, who wear so many hat, different hats. It's very easy to get a confusion as to what hat somebody's wearing and who they're speaking for and what interests they're representing. And so it's, it's necessary to understand the context of our town officers when they act as to whether it's a real breach of ethics or whether it's in the, in the normalcy in the way Greenwich works. Mr. Morgenot certainly knows those subtleties of town government. It is also of import to mention that he's replacing Lou Patako, who has been, is a lawyer in this town for many years and has been counsel for the Housing Authority for decades at least, and also very well versed in this particular on-the-ground town government. So it is a fitting replacement for Mr. Patako's long and good service, which we thank him. We voted for Mr. Morgenot, 12-0-0. By the way, it was a pleasure to be sitting at the head of the table with Mr. Morgenot in front of me for once in 30 years. Thank you.
Discussion on item 17. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Combined calendar items two, five, six, 13 through 15, and 17, and proceed to poll your delegation. I do have the results of the vote on our consent calendar items. Those were items four, seven, nine, and eighteen through twenty-five. Those in favor, 166. Opposed, three. Abstaining, three. The consent calendar items have carried. That now brings us to the last seven remaining items that we will now take up separately, beginning with item number one, which was postponed from our January, postponed from our January meeting. All right, that is now currently before us. Mr. Von Keiseling, are you going to move to postpone this?
I believe both committees have not been able to visit with Mr. Scarpy yet, so I believe it's also Health and Human Services intent.
All right, so on behalf, that is a motion to postpone to our June meeting, correct?
Yes, it would be, I guess, yes.
And that is made on behalf of one of our committees, so it does not require a second. I will call for a voice vote on this. All those in favor of postponing item number one to our June meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion has carried. The next item is item three. Again, that was postponed from our March meeting and is now before us. And I believe that will also be subject to a further motion to postpone.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, we're going to meet with him on the 3rd. Our meeting was canceled, so that we're not able, if, there was no motion by the committee, but I would be happy to put my own personal motion forward to postpone.
All right. So Mr. Von Keiseling has moved to postpone item three to our June meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, again, I will call for a voice vote. All those in favor of postponing item three to our June meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion has carried. Item number eight now comes before us. This was postponed from our March meeting, so it is now currently before us. This is the, a resolution appointing Richard Maitland to be a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2015. May we have the committee reports on this, beginning with Mr. Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee?
Evening again. The Land Use Committee interviewed Richard Maitland last month, when he was on the call for that, for last month. Mr. Maitland's being renominated as a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. He is the longest-serving member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. He is a retired architect. He's very familiar with, with our Greenwich regulations and with the zoning process in Greenwich and, and as well as nationally. He brings extensive knowledge of construction to the board. We had a discussion with Mr. Maitland about the status of implementing the POCD and particularly, as you, as you may know, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission recently adopted new green coverage regulations. They have adopted a number of regula, new regulations since we, since we passed the POCD. There are a number of others that are still in process, including grade plane regulations. Our vote on Mr. Maitland was 11-1-0. The negative vote came from District Seven. The delegate there stated that he feels that decisions and decisions being made by the Planning and Zoning Commission are inconsistent with the POCD, that the Planning and Zoning Commission needs more hydrology engineers, environmentalists as members, not more members of the real estate development community. Again, Mr. Maitland is a retired architect, and our vote was 11-1-0.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We met with Richard Maitland, who is probably the senior member of P&amp;Z incumbent. We voted for him eight in favor, four against, zero abstentions. It was on the 20th. Discussion focused on the tension between the P&amp;Z approvals and the new POCD. There was discussion about the green coverage regulations, lot limitation regulations, cost of securing permits and approvals. The dissenting votes are Districts One and Seven thought there was too much development in town. Districts Six and Ten thought there was too much regulation. It would appear to me that what we have in this discussion is a concern of understanding of what's going on. It is the Planning and Zoning Commission. In some towns, such as Stamford, there are two separate bodies. There's the Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission. In this case, zoning takes care of all the applications for people who want to come to the town for permits. Planning takes care of things like the POCD and creating new regulation. So they serve two different purposes. So when they're sitting on the zoning issues, these are issues in front of them based on the current law as it stands, the zoning regulations. Anything that's appropriate within the zoning regulations is by right of that of the applicant. Therefore, the board must vote for it, whether, sometimes as, my term would be hold-your-nose vote, we've sometimes felt that, but they still are vote, we've sometimes felt that, but they still are forced to vote to permit these things. The rationale being that even if they didn't, then they would go to court, and if they weren't acting on strong grounds, we spend a lot of legal fees, go to court and have it overturned. Two things happen then. We spend a lot of legal fees, and oftentimes, the application is kind of vacated and the applicant gets much more than they would be if they were granted with conditions and such which cut them back. So it's a devil's game, in a sense, for the zoning issues. On the planning side of it, we have the POCD, which we all adopted with a high majority in this body, which is the vision of how the town should be in the future, what we're trying to move forward to do. Their job as a planning commission is to then take that POCD as their guide and change those governing regulations bit by bit till they come in conformance of the POCD, so gradually we bring the town's regulation into conformance of the way we want to go. Until those regulations in place, the zoning is a static thing. They're doing that with these new regulations. There's several new regulations they put in. We've heard a lot in the papers about it on various coverage and limitations. That's created a great uproar in people as a taking, in a sense, they feel of their property rights. Every regulation does control what you can do with your property, and therefore, there's a legitimate reason to feel constrained by them. So the problem we have here is that there is a bifurcation of our interests as a body, and I think it was represented by the vote, between having strong regulation, but not strong application of that regulation. Thank you.
Discussion on item eight. Peter Quigley, District 7.
Good evening. I'm Peter Quigley. I'm District 7's land use delegate, and I want to explain and articulate my position of a no vote on land use reappointments, both on the Planning and Zoning and the Zoning Board of Appeals, who have sat on boards for four or five years or more and who appear not to be making decisions consistent with the 2009 Plan of Conservation and Development, and who in their respective commissions have not been successful or influential in supporting better regulations, closing the loopholes, allowing for special exceptions, special permits, and the ZBA hardship variances on big development and big homes, but hurting the small homeowner, wanting to build a porch extension. Talking about a balance of regulations here in the planning and zoning area. It's time for a watch change, to find new people, and I ask for your consideration tonight to vote no on reappointments, who have sat on boards for five, four or five years or more. A no vote sends a message to the, from the RTM legislative branch to the executive branch that we expect more from the reappointments who have sat on commissions for more than four or five years, to support our legislative Plan of Conservation and Development, the will of the people, by the way. And a no vote sends a message that, that we do not think the land use boards are connecting the dots between what is written and what is actually done, between new regulations to be created and their decisions to support this plan for better land use, site development, environmental and water management concerns, and for closing loopholes and special exceptions limiting the volume of hardship variance approvals. Land use decisions by reappointments and regulations with too many loopholes favor the big homes, big development, and tear downs, and hurt the little guy and the little gal. Land use regulations must be revamped to modify decisions in order to protect the quality of life and sustainability of our natural resources for the future generations in this town, as defined in the Plan of Conservation and Development. Where are the regulations? Where are the new grade plane, excavation, fill, soil mix, and erosion and sedimentation guidelines? How about soil testing standards and protocols for site contamination? Who is in charge? How about ordinances to curb abusive practice of clearcutting? And what about specific stormwater regulations passed by our neighbors in Darien back in the year 2009? Lot coverage. In the POCD on page four, section 1.4, it was for managing the explosion of impervious surface overdevelopment and the approvals of wedding cake homes that create backyard flooding. Not to be called green. Green for open space and reference to environmental rain gardens, although that's an important, although all of this helps. Town wetlands, by the way, has not signed on or signed off on these green regulations. Wetlands is one of the most important departments in this town that has not signed off on the green regulations.
Ms. Kressner, do you have a point of order?
This conversation of our speaker is going into a different area of inland wetlands and water sources concerned, and this is a P&amp;Z person who's coming before us. So I think we're straying a bit too far. Can we take a nominee?
All right, well, we will give the speaker some latitude. He is talking about land use in general, so I think he is not out of order.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. What I'm trying to state here is that they haven't approved this green coverage regulation because there are too many exceptions, and we all know the exceptions become the rule. And in fact, there are not enough incentives built into these green regulations to support the low-impact development program of their drainage manual. There is a disconnect. There is no teeth in the bark of this dog. Dots are not being connected in decisions nor regulations by sitting commissioners. Look around at the applications at Tollgate on the Post Road, for the regional centers at Mercedes and Lexus dealerships, for Deerfield Drive behind the library, for even the size and scope of the CVS, the hole-in-the-ground building where maxing out 90% of lot coverage in that area. And then, let's look at the high school. Application approved by all town land use commissions. What about the wedding cake homes and the McMansions that are still being built and approved? Banks that are displacing the business mix of town since 2009? Again, the continued approvals of a Mercedes-Benz application where lot coverage exception was approved that permitted build-out by 50% increase. I could go on, but when you look at our neighborhoods, our constituents, that are now footing the bill and being forced to spend thousands of dollars to protect their property values and to defend our town's Plan of Conservation and Development. It's time for some fresh thinking. Change in the watch, a different mix of people that you've heard before, legal, technical, hydraulic engineers and environmental backgrounds who have served in the public trust, and understand land use law, understand land use, and are willing to support the Plan of Conservation and Development, and the small homeowner. Undoubtedly, there will be those who will follow, who will speak to the credentials and expertise of sitting commissioners, and speak to the fact they are good guys and gals with heart. They are. We thank them, and we thank them for their many years of their service. But this is not about expertise and heart. This is about their vote and about performance, and possibly their biases, and over the past five years, and in this case, 12 years. Look around. Is it better? Have things changed that much in 10 years? The RTM has the legislative approval, power of appointments, so please vote your conscience and responsibility. A no vote sends the message that we expect better performance and results. Last month, it was six, almost 60 no votes for a Zoning Board of Appeals reappointment. An additional few tonight sends a similar message, and who knows, maybe the vote will reach 116. But it will happen, and it will happen to reach 116 because without improvement, little positive change will occur, and unless it does, there will be that one vote that reaches 116. Let's send the message sooner than later tonight. Thank you for your consideration.
I don't think we've ever had 230 people present, so 116 may not be the magic number. Harry Labine, District 11.
Richard Maitland should be reappointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission for several reasons. He is a licensed architect and brings to the commission a skill that is critical to the commission's decision process. He has had extensive professional experience. For many years, he practiced with Perkins and Will, one of the largest architectural firms in the country. For several years, before he retired, he practiced architecture here in Greenwich. He has had extensive experience as a three-term member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. As a result of that experience, he's one of the, one of a relatively small group of people who truly understand our Planning and Zoning Commission, our Planning and Zoning Regulations, our subdivision regulations, the relevant federal and state law that applies to them, and how they interact. Finally, he has shown during his years on the commission that he is totally dedicated to his work on the commission. The extent of his preparation for commission meetings is legendary. I can personally attest that his approach to decisions is carefully thought out and always within the regulations. Greenwich is fortunate to have Richard Maitland as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I urge you to support his nomination. And one last comment about progress. Changing regulations should be done with exceeding care, only after research, public hearings. It takes time. The inevitable, unanticipated reaction occurs. It happens over and over again. The commission is working on these things slowly and deliberately and is getting there at all due speed, and I think they should be complimented for it. Bottom line, please support Mr. Maitland. Thank you.
Thank you. Louisa Stone, District 10.
Good evening, fellow members. You've heard from a member who is very disappointed in what the land use boards and commissions have been able to do. But we're not talking about all of the land use boards. We're talking about Richard Maitland, who has been nominated for reappointment as a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. To turn him down would be to turn down one of the most valuable members the commission has. When he came on the commission, I was in my 11th year on the commission, and the first thing he says when examining an application is, how does it fit with the Plan of Conservation and Development? And he quotes from the Plan of Conservation and Development every time he considers an application. Furthermore, he goes to the regulations. He goes by the rules. He doesn't invent things. He doesn't deviate. If you want somebody who is a solid citizen, who can read the rules, who has a vision of what the town should be, you want Richard Maitland. Furthermore, he has the professional ability to look at plans in a way that no one else I have seen could. I saw him look at the hospital plans and pointed out to the architect that the interior floor plan didn't match the exterior. If they walked out where the hall was, they'd run into a blank, blank wall, or in another place, if they walked out, they'd have a 12-foot drop to the ground because they hadn't worked it out. So I urge you, please vote in support of Richard Maitland. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling would like to speak again.
I'd like to speak for myself this time, Mr. Moderator. I would just like to point out to the body, since we have such a large turnover and new people, that both the two previous speakers are past chairmen of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Stone was Chair during one of the POCD creations, so I take their comments with great weight. I would say one last thing. Mr. Maitland is a detail man, and in the RTM, excuse me, in the P&amp;Z, the devil's in the details. Mr. Maitland fleecomes these applications for the loopholes and the fine print of these applications. Anyone who's worked with this for a while knows that it's the fine print that makes all the details. We have a U.S. tobacco, for example, down there, the larger addition on that was because of a detail that was overlooked. It should never have been there, but in the original application, there was a little fine print put in there, a little something done, perfectly legal, and all of a sudden you had that. That's what happens when you don't have somebody looking at the fine print and going through the details. Mr. Maitland is the man on that commission that does that.
Dr. Carl Carlson, District 1.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. Mr. Maitland has been on the Planning and Zoning Commission for over 10 years. I remember him very well on an April night almost exactly 10 years ago. Mr. Maitland has come before the Appointments Committee a number of times. In one of his previous appearances, he talked about control, control of people's property, and he was very much of an advocate of his Planning and Zoning Commission having control over people's property. I myself believe that people should control their property more. I think that if you want to keep the rights to your property, you want to vote out a fellow like Mr. Maitland after 10 years. I don't think the Planning and Zoning Commission over the last 10 years has done very well. In terms of the YMCA decision, a couple of Mr. Maitland's colleagues have apologized to me for their decision. I would like to also point out that in his most recent appearance before the Appointments Commission, Mr. Maitland talked about the stringent, remarked about the stringency of planning and zoning decisions. When it came to my neighborhood, he allowed the YMCA entirely to go through. But what I would say with these green restrictions, these green restrictions are a pleasant idea, but the history of the Planning and Zoning Commission is that when an advocate is strong enough over the last 10 years, they've thrown out all considerations of green restrictions and let them pour cement and concrete all over the place. This is a good place to say to the Planning and Zoning Commission, make a more consistent program. This gentleman is not the right person to continue for more years. He's had enough, and he's done enough to the town. Thank you.
Further discussion on item eight. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number eight, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the result of the vote on the combined calendar items. Those are items 2, 5, 6, 13, 14, 15, and 17. Those in favor, 181. Opposed, 0. Abstaining, 2. The combined calendar items have carried. The next separate item to come before us is item number 10. Wayne Fox, our town attorney, with that resolution.
Resolve that the sum of $161,000 be and the same is hereby appropriated to be added to account number A140-51450, Professional and Other Special Services.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 10 has been moved and seconded. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, we took this matter up last Monday evening. Attorney Wayne Fox of the Law Department presented this request for $161,000 to pay for expert fees to assist the town in litigating the Hamilton Avenue School Construction Case against Worth Construction, and also to defend the DeBelas lawsuit, which has been brought against the town in connection with mold exposure at the temporary school facilities. Also present was attorney Fred DiRango and expert Steve Pitnello from Navigant Consulting. They were available for questioning. This expenditure will see us through to the end of the fiscal year, ending June 30th. Approximately 70% of this money will be going to the Worth Construction Case, and the balance will be spent on the mold case. Attorney Fox explained that this case is very labor-intensive for the expert because of the time period involved and the construction to be, to, the construction documentation to be reviewed. More than 150,000 pages of documents from the architect and, as well as two and a half years' worth of daily activity sheets, will have to be reviewed by the expert, provide, and be prepared to provide an opinion to the trier of fact. Attorney Fox believes that in a complex construction litigation case like the Worth case, the expert is probably more important than the trial attorney in obtaining a favorable result. It was clear to our committee that the money was necessary to protect the interests of the town in this litigation, in these litigation matters. We took one vote on the merits. Our vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. And Gordon Ennis, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen,
Ladies and gentlemen, the Finance Committee met last Monday night at eight o'clock at its regular meeting. All districts were represented. We considered this item and voted twelve zero zero. There is one point Mr. Fox made I think is very important. This is the first time in six years that the Law Department has asked for additional funding in this line item. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item ten. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number ten, and proceed to poll your delegation? Item number eleven now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that item? Yes, sir.
James Michael, Chief Engineer for the Town of Greenwich. Resolved that the sum of two hundred thousand dollars be and the same is hereby appropriated to be added to capital account number Z three one five, five nine, eight one zero, dash one two, one nine nine, known as G H S remediation.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item eleven has been moved and seconded. Josh Brown, Chair of our Education Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members and guests, the Education Committee met last Monday, first at seven P.M. with an information session with Mr. Ross of the Building Committee and Ms. Seibert from Public Works, and then took up the item as part of its regularly scheduled eight o'clock meeting. It is an additional appropriation for testing. There's been quite a host of testing done already. That testing has identified the need to do some more testing, which is scheduled to be done this week. So timing is everything. There will be even more testing likely to occur after this round of testing. This is, again, to isolate and identify the extent of contamination so that remediation plans can move forward and come through the late summertime with an idea of what will need to be done and how much it will cost. Some in our committee questioned the iterative process of doing testing, to do more testing, to do more testing, with really not a clear sight as to when that testing was going to come to fruition or conclusion. Couldn't understand what percentage of testing in the grand scheme of things had been achieved. There are some concerns as to what could happen with the contamination and level of remediation that would have to occur. Our vote was eleven in favor, one opposed with none abstaining. The one opposed felt that it was too open-ended in the ongoing case of testing. Eleven one zero.
Thank you. Gordon Ennis, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, the Finance Committee voted twelve zero zero for this item. The fact of the matter is, we just need more testing to know how much it's going to require in remediation. Thank you.
Thank you. John DeChappell, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Public Works voted eleven zero zero. District two absent. This is a mandated two hundred thousand dollars that has to be spent to continue with the project. It was not a reflection of MISA at all, and we are unanimous for it.
Thank you. Discussion on item eleven. Yes, Mr. Pazluzny, District eight.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. I just wanted to pose a question, if that's appropriate. I would like to ask the, our town officials if there are any other construction sites in the Town of Greenwich that may be equally affected by contamination during the period of construction of the same period of time around the new Greenwich High School. As I know, the old Greenwich High School went through a demolition and a reconfiguration right after the new construction, or the new move was made to the new high school. So I'm wondering if these contractors at the town found it somehow wise to select them and trust them to do this kind of construction, if other projects might also be affected. Do we have other public areas that are going to be bombshells coming up in the future?
Mr. Pazluzny, I have to limit any questions to the resolution before us, which is an appropriation for the high school remediation.
Okay. Well, that, I just wanted to voice that concern. I don't know how far that can go and what other areas might be affected that would replicate this problem.
All right. Thank you. Further discussion on item eleven. Item twelve now comes before us. Mr. Michaels, Chief Engineer of the Town of Greenwich. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're right. Hold on one minute, Mr. Michaels. Let me call for the vote on that item. This is not a combined item. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Now, did we vote on item ten?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So please mark your voting cards, item number eleven, and proceed to poll your delegation. Item twelve now comes before us. Mr. Michaels.
Good evening. Thank you. Resolved that the Town of Greenwich grant an easement at the proposed Koskab Park, formerly the Koskab Power Plant Site, located at twenty-two Sound Shore Drive to Metro North Railroad through the state of Connecticut for the purposes of constructing an underground duck bank.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item twelve has been moved and seconded. Mr. Berg with the report of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening. We had, last Monday night, we had the project engineer. We also had the Deputy Commissioner David Thompson and the Commissioner Amy Seibert to, came before the Land Use Committee and explained this proposal. As the explanos indicate, this is a swap of easements with the, with the railroad. The existing, there is an existing easement under the power plant site, and the railroad is offering to swap that for a new line that would run under the proposed parking lot for the Koskab Power Plant Park. The railroad needs the line to bring additional electricity to the, to their, to the railroad. The, the town prefers not to have an easement running under the new soccer field. Ms. Seibert assured the Land Use Committee that there are no negatives associated with this swap, only positives. Our vote on this item was twelve zero zero.
Thank you. Doug Wells with the report of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
We had Attorney Gene McLaughlin of the Law Department assisting us in this request to grant an easement to the state of Connecticut. The only additional point I would bring up, other than what the previous speaker said, was that Attorney McLaughlin characterized this as a benefit to the town because the existing power line is under the field, or the proposed field, and if we left it there, there would be times when the field would not be available to be used because they would need access to the underground facility that is apparently available only through manholes, which would result in disruptions to the people using the field. Our committee had essentially two areas of concern. One, that the indemnification and hold harmless clause did not offer the town sufficient protection to satisfy some members of our committee. There was a discussion as to whether or not the town could go back and perhaps negotiate a better arrangement regarding liability with the state. Attorney McLaughlin didn't think that was likely to occur. Attorney McLaughlin could also not provide us with any verification that the site of the proposed underground power line installation was one where the town was satisfied that there was, that excavation would not reveal hazardous waste. However, we were later joined in our discussions by Gabriella Circosta Kohe, an engineer with the DPW. She explained that there has been testing done at the area where this underground line will be run, and there was no hazardous waste discovered. Based on her representation and her opinion, our committee became less concerned about the indemnification provisions in the proposed easement agreement. We took a vote as to legal order only. Our vote was ten to, ten in favor, two opposed. The two negative votes were still concerned that the indemnification language did not do enough to protect the town in the event of discovery of hazardous waste or negligence on the part of the construction workers hired to do the project.
Thank you. John DeChappell, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Public Works again voted eleven zero zero with District two away, and the situation was very clear. We were very well explained to us by Dave Thompson and, of course, Amy Seibert and Gabriella Kohe mentioned before, who's the town engineer. And there's no question that this has to be done if we want the railroad to operate the way it is, so the easement was granted.
Thank you. Discussion on item eight. Mr. Berg, District eight.
So I received a letter today from a resident who attended the Land Use Committee last Monday night. He asked that I read this letter. Is that in order?
I suppose so.
So, so the letter, the letter is from Michael W. Finkbeiner, who is out of town this evening. Mr. Finkbeiner is a licensed land surveyor, and he is the senior environmental analyst for an organization called Byram River Park System. So he writes, "Dear Mr. Berg, I'm writing to you in your capacity as Chair of the RTM Land Use Committee, which voted last week to support the proposed new easement for electric power for the railroad over the Town of Greenwich land with abandonment of the old utility tunnel under the proposed artificial field surface as it appears on the Koskab Power Plant Park site plan. As a licensed land surveyor, and behalf of the Byram River Park System, which has been retained in a professional capacity to represent neighbors on the waterfront side of the park, we object to the proposed item number twelve on tonight's RTM call on the grounds of inadequate survey information. A full site plan is required for review and approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission, Board of Selectmen, and the Land Use Committee. This has not been provided. We have made an FOI request for the site plan since March twentieth, which is still unfulfilled as of today. The map plan of the proposed easement provided to the RTM in its supporting documents is barely readable. However, the map title indicates that it is a quote compilation map, unquote, and not a current A two survey. The coordinate grid depicted on the map is the old nineteen twenty-seven grid and not the, not the current Connecticut state grid system. Inadequate detail is provided on the map to assess the risk to the town of physical property it is receiving back from the railroad after abandonment of the old easement, which to our knowledge was constructed at a time when the railroad owned the property. May we also remind the RTM that the last time the railroad abandoned electric power equipment at this site, the remediation costs paid by the taxpayers of Greenwich prove to be enormous and is ongoing at tens of millions of dollars. At the very least, the RTM should request a full accounting of the totals, total funds paid for the remediation. What guarantee or hold harmless agreement is now in place for the proposed abandonment of the active power feed tunnel under the proposed field? A compilation map is by Connecticut law not appropriate to support a conveyance transaction. Any homeowner knows that an A two surveyor, survey is required for even a building permit. We therefore request that the RTM be informed of this failure to provide a full site plan and current A two survey of the easement exchange, and that approval be postponed until a proper survey is provided and remediation of proposed property to be abandoned in favor of the Town of Greenwich be addressed. We attach here with a photo of the area in question from March twenty-third and an annotated markup of the abandonment parcel to the Town of Greenwich. Signed sincerely, Michael W. Finkbeiner."
Thank you. Further discussion on item twelve. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number twelve, and proceed to poll your delegation? While we are voting, I will, I have the results of the vote on item number eight, which was the appointment of Richard Maitland to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those in favor, one twenty-seven; opposed, fifty-one; abstaining, seven. That item has carried. I also have the result of the vote on item ten, which is the appropriation for one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars for litigation expenses. Those in favor, one seventy-five; opposed, six; abstaining, three. That item has carried. And the last item on our agenda now to come before us is item sixteen. Drew Marzullo, our Selectmen, with that resolution.
Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Inland, Wetlands, and Water Course Agency for a term expiring three thirty-one sixteen. William W. Galvin.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item sixteen has been moved and seconded. Mr. Von Keiseling with the report of our Appointments Committee.
Yes, we are still unable to meet with Mr. Galvin. We will be interviewing him on the seventeenth next. I would therefore request a postponement on my own.
All right. Is there a second to Mr. Von Keiseling's individual motion to postpone Mr. Gal, item sixteen to our June meeting? All right, it has been moved and seconded to postpone item sixteen to our June meeting. I will call for a voice vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion has carried. So we are now awaiting the results of the vote on items eleven and twelve. I do have one announcement I would like to make. We had hoped to be able to distribute the new RTM directories for the new term. This is the old term directory, very handy document, but it is safe and secure in the town clerk's office as we speak, those copies. So we will get those copies to the district chairs this week, and the district chairs can then make arrangements with the members to distribute those. So keep your eye out for the directories, which, again, were funded by Mr. Crowe, and perhaps we can have a more formal recognition in May, but, and of course, the work done by the League of Women Voters in putting that together. We will mention that in May as well. We have the result of the vote on item twelve, that is the easement at the Koskab Park. Those in favor, one oh three; opposed, sixty-two; abstaining, sixteen. That item has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting, an absent objection, this meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming, and have a very safe trip home.